Okay, it's nine o'clock and we're going to bring this meeting to order. If you could all please rise with me for pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, thank you. The first item we'll attend to is that we need to approve the modified agenda that has been submitted to everyone. We talked about changing the agenda and you're now looking at a modified one. All delegates, can I have a motion to approve or are there changes, deletions, or any modifications that wish to be made at this time? Linda?
Do you need a motion from a previous agenda to move comments afterwards?
Do you want a motion to...
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just approve the new agenda that you have been handed out.
We have a motion from Marcia. We have a second from Carly. Any...all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, fine. I'm gonna...because we don't have...we have limited copies because I have a limited printer. Oh, Chris says more are coming. I'm just gonna read it real quick. We're gonna have a chair report, then we're gonna do a new business. Under new business, there are four items. It's the motion to recall election for master board members. Item B is the delegate debate on the resolution and the item C would be member comments. Item D is additional delegate debate and then the vote and then we will adjourn. That's all that's on the topic today. So, I'm going to move. First of all, thank you all for coming. I'm sorry it's here in the North Clubhouse. This was a hastily put-together meeting and we would've had a lot more room in the ballroom, of course. The nice thing is that everybody's here. Unfortunately, we just don't have space to accommodate as we normally would. I'm usually fairly brief in the report from the chair. This will be somewhat lengthy. Please, please bear with me. I want to talk first about the role of the delegate assembly in the governance of Sun Lakes. If you go out to this website, you'll find the foundational...our website at sunlakescountryclub.com, you'll find our foundational documents. And if you read those documents, you'll find that in the early days of Sun Lakes, the delegate assembly had a much bigger role in making decisions for the communities. There were lots of things that had to be decided during the build-out phase and since then, we've kind of evolved into a group that has still mostly responsibility for a lot of community activities with inside and outside of Sun Lakes. We support those activities. We still have a responsibility to accurately verify votes for elections and record them. That's our election responsibility. We don't have any budget. We don't have any income and we don't have any community decisional authority. In other words, we can make no decisions whatsoever that are immediately enacted that affect the community. The...we were designed in that document, if you read it. The delegate assembly was designed to be a check on the master board. In the original writing of those documents, you will see that the delegate assembly could, by only a majority vote, without cause, remove one or more of the master board members. In other words, this meeting, had it been the way it was designed originally, we could raise our hands and all of a sudden, people that were on the board would no longer be there. That power was taken away from the delegate assembly in subsequent rulings from the state of California. It's Davis Sterling. We no longer have that authority. However, because we have...and normally in an HOA, what happens is if you're going to have a recall of board members, you have to have a special meeting of the membership and to enact that, if your association does not have a delegate assembly, you have to have a petition that circulates and you have to get only 5% of the membership to sign the petition and then a special meeting for the purpose of having a recall is put into motion. Because at Sun Lakes, we have a delegate assembly, the delegate assembly has the responsibility and/or the right, if you want to look at it that way, to enact a special meeting of the membership for the purpose of considering a recall vote by its...on its own. So that bypasses the petition process within the community. And today, we're going to consider a resolution for that purpose. You know, we find ourselves in an unenviable position here. We really do. No one wanted to join the DDA to do this. But there are issues at hand which clearly demonstrate the need to take this action, at least to the view of the delegates. We recognize that and make no challenge to the board's right to make changes in vendor services for the benefit of the community. They have a fiduciary responsibility to periodically review all major contracts and, following industry best practices, should execute that responsibility without bias or prejudice. In 2024, Sun Lakes was over budget by over $500,000. Most of those losses were stemming from the food and beverage operations and lacking board authorization, the Financial Advisory Committee, the PAC, moved to take matters into their own hands and issued an unauthorized request for proposal to several vendors in the food and beverage industry. The board suspended Chairman Don Day at that time from the PAC for his part in piloting the action without board approval. After being elected to the board, Directors Burkle and Day developed their own food and beverage request for proposal and sent it to possible candidates. This was done without the support of our procurement advisory committee. The group chartered specifically to prepare a thorough, professional request for proposal for any contract in excess of $25,000 and then analyze the responses. The PAC activities also extend to contract analysis and they provide reports which are submitted to the board to support their decisions. The PAC was excluded from any participation in the Morrison CCL contract and if you're unaware, Morrison is the overarching parent of Compass Community Living CCL, with board members choosing to perform all the due diligence. When this contract was signed, it was hailed as the greatest and best possible solution for our F&amp;B services. By the time the entire...by that time, the entire PAC had resigned in unison to protest the board's decision to exclude the committee from the Morrison CCL request for proposal and contract. Even though they were no longer a functioning committee, the former PAC members obtained a copy of the completed Morrison document contract for analysis. They identified 43 key areas of concern for Sun Lakes in the document that had just been signed. Many of those areas of concern have now become glaringly apparent. Since 2025, CCL began in April of 2025. To date, CCL has not resolved any of the financial overruns they were hired to correct. In fact, the community losses have been substantially greater. Irrespective of the extremely poor results delivered by the methods used for the Morrison CCL contract, the board then proceeded to create another request for proposal for management services, using the same methods and sent it to prospective candidates. Past board members and many other with considerable experience in procurement have openly stated the timeline presented in the request for proposal is so rushed, thorough vetting is nearly impossible. The overwhelming majority of delegates expressed concern about the wisdom of entering into a contract with another new major vendor while problems of the board's previously executed major contract were yet to be solved. Our management services and food and beverage contracts are the two largest expenditures at Sun Lakes and a repeatable, exhaustive, methodical process must be followed to ensure the best results for the community. The board had a working roadmap, including a sample RFP by the...by simply opening the PAC handbook that's posted out on the website under the procurement advisory committee. They bypassed...they chose to ignore this blueprint and they bypassed support from the community chartered for that purpose. At best, this demonstrates a lack of wisdom by refusing to consider differing views and opinions. At worst, it shows arrogance and indifference to outcome. The change in food and beverage has roundly been referred to as disaster, but instead of moving to resolve the problems brought to the community by their actions, the board instead elected to pursue potentially replacing the community management under the guise it had not been reviewed in over seven years. In reality, less than two years ago, less than two years ago, the board hired legal counsel and they assisted in renegotiating our contract with FSR. That's a pretty intensive review, less than two years ago. It is known to the delegate assembly that FSR submitted a final and best proposal to retain their management services contract. That contract provided for Sun Lakes numerous concessions and the value of those concessions was in excess of a half million dollars. But that proposal was rejected out of hand simply because it came from FSR. Such actions indicate operating with bias that is detrimental to the community and an abrogation of fiduciary duty. Regardless of the project, when board members collude to reach a predetermined outcome, they operate in self-interest, not in community best interest. Biased decisions lead to flawed judgments, poor outcomes by overlooking facts. Paradoxically, bias convinces those with decisional power that their judgment is good when it is critically flawed. Most people are completely blind to bias. Excuse me. The board's decision to replace FSR at any cost has cost plenty and not just financially. Their actions created shockwaves impacting the lives of not just residents, particularly those of staff. When one's livelihood is threatened, people will seek to move to...seek a more secure future. In the last month, Sun Lakes has lost an enormous amount of institutional knowledge. Letty Cosse was serving as our banquet's manager. She'd been on staff for nearly two decades. She was a cornerstone of F&amp;B operations and she resigned last month. Jason Ewall's, another 20-year employee, resigned this month. He'd been serving as assistant general manager, was the right-hand man to the general manager and the go-to guy for many residents and staff. Three people who unquestionably knew the most about operations at Sun Lakes were Chris Mitchell, Jason Ewall's, Tammy Morgan, often referred to as the big three by those on the staff they led. Last Friday, Tammy Morgan announced that she too will be leaving Sun Lakes. She's been here some 30 years. Employees do not work productively in an environment saturated with uncertainty and constant fear of replacement. Of course, employees change jobs for a variety of reasons, but the exit of so much key staff is hard to view as anything other than the natural reaction to living in the past two years with the anxiety that their livelihoods could be snatched from them at any time and they lacked any power to alter their situation. It's bitter validation that established methods and processes should be strictly followed. Part of the board's responsibility to provide...part of the board's responsibility is to provide a stability which fosters the emotional security necessary to produce best work product and employee growth. That's true of anybody who has power in a company, too. I had a company for many years and if you don't have a happy workforce, you've got the worst problem you can possibly have. Few in the community need know as much about the workings of Sun Lakes as those who are actively involved in its governance. That kind of only makes sense. Most residents are now blissfully unaware of all this that's going on, of these issues. Some have asked why we could not wait until the April elections and have three new board members. The answer is pretty simple. To minimize further damage from capricious actions, three board members of the current board should be removed from service as soon as possible. Delegates do not take this step lightly and are all aware of the cost to hold the recall election. While the cost is not insignificant, it equates to about $4.50 per household, an expense that pales if you want to compare it to the financial debacle brought by the ill-advised and poorly executed contract for food and beverage. If this resolution passes, it will add to the distress that some in our community feel. Delegates are aware that this action will make them a focal point of criticism and anger from those not of similar minds. But like the board, delegates were also elected as representatives of the residents and in their districts, they're charged with guarding the best interests of the community. Many people throughout Sun Lakes will speak on this matter with an authority charged by emotions in place of knowledge, hoping the fervor in their message supplants well-reasoned arguments. Sun Blake...Sun...Facebook rants and, you know, speculative posts are usually ill-informed and their disinformation serves only to supplant meaningful dialogue. Any change is accompanied by a period of instability. The board only...the delegate assembly only asks that when the board makes changes that affect us all, we follow established process and get it right the first time. The mistakes brought by rushing into action are expensive to the homeowners association and harm many. We can but hope that the short-term pain in this action may bring a far...may far outweigh... may be far outweighed by the benefit that it creates. The DDA has no opinion whether we should change management companies. That is and always will be a board decision. But any such decision must follow an established, repeatable process. If that process is discovered to be flawed, corrections should be enacted for the benefit of this and every future board. I...a number of people have asked...this is a personal side note. A number of people have approached me, asked me if I'm going to be running for the board and...or if I would run for the board. And I will not. And the reason for that is I do not think that it's disingenuous, if perhaps not unethical, to be leading this particular motion and then standing in reserves to fill a seat that's occupied. That's my own personal decision. And I will now move to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. And I need a motion from someone to introduce the motion for recall.
I'm also moved.
Linda's moved. We have a second.
I second.
And we have a second. Chris, can I have one of those documents back?
Sorry. I just...you can read it. You just...
This is the resolution. It's labeled Resolution 25-1. A resolution...wait, before we get into this, I don't...if I don't write it down, I don't remember. Mr. Canino is joining us today. Mr. Walter is joining us today and I'm gonna pass the mic to Mr. Canino. He said he wanted to say some words.
Thank you, Cal. Good morning, everybody, all residents of Sun Lakes that are here and the district delegates and chairperson. I just have a few comments to make. I employ this group to exercise the rights that are written in our bylaws and I thank you for taking this so seriously. I won't have any personal comments today. I represent all the residents of Sun Lakes, not just some of them, and I also represent the master board. I just want to share with you a few things. The holiday season is getting underway starting next week. I've spent some time on the phone with some residents lately that have called with concerns, as you all have, I'm sure, as well. Concurrent campaigns will be the end result of today's vote if you vote to remove all the board members or some of the board members. And what I mean by that is this. Paperwork will be drawn in December for the April election. Paperwork will be drawn this week for this special election. So literally, there'll be two campaigns going at the same time, which is gonna be really confusing for people. It'll be confusing for not only the candidates, do they leave the sign up, do they take the sign down, but for the residents. And that's who I'm speaking on behalf of, the residents, in the holiday season. A lot of people that live here won't see another holiday season. So my only concern is to the...as you go through this process, you keep in mind, we need to make this as painless as possible. A few facts. The RFP has gone out. People have returned them. Companies have returned them and the board is currently interviewing those companies. The board also last week voted to reestablish the PAC and is accepting applications at this time. How many are turned in at this time? I don't know. It's Monday morning and I haven't been over to the office yet. My only question is, how many district delegates in this room today, after this vote is over, is pulling paperwork to replace board members they voted out today? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I've been on the board for six years and the...this...this board this past year has been very dysfunctional. I'm not going to say who did what or, you know, the decisions, but it's been somewhat dysfunctional. We lost our first president. Our treasurer recently resigned. We don't even have a treasurer at the current time. They're rushing in, I think, you know, making decisions quickly, which are not always in the best interest of the community. I concur with all the statements in the resolution. I want us to take more time to review the RFPs and not make the mistakes that we did earlier this year with the CCL. You know, I don't want to have two mistakes running concurrently at the same time. You know, the budget for 2026, which was recently approved, that was a FSR budget. Some of the companies that are being considered, their fees are different and higher than we currently have. So my guess is, I mean, you never know, but my guess is that we'll have to have a special assessment to pay for the additional fees imposed by a new, unknown company. You know, so I prefer the stability. I prefer working with...we know FSR has issues, but I think we can address those issues and that's what I would like to try and do. Thank you.
I thank the board members for their comments. I would like to add a couple things, too. People have questioned the speed at which we are moving on this recall petition. To Joe's point, the only reason we're moving at this speed is with respect to the April election. That election has to happen and we want to get as much space in front of that election as we can possibly have to avoid some of the problems that Joe was talking about. That's why we're having this sudden meeting instead of doing it during a normal scheduled meeting. That's really the reason for the rush that we see here. I'm going to go back now. I'm going to read the resolution that is going to be debated. This is a delegate assembly resolution numbered 2025-1. A resolution of the delegate assembly to call a membership meeting to remove individual board members. Whereas the delegate assembly of Sun Lakes Country Club HOA is vested with the authority to oversee governance matters, including calling a special meeting of the members of the association. And whereas the delegate assembly has reviewed the facts, evidence, and circumstances related to these concerns. And whereas the delegate assembly finds that removal of the below-named board members is in the best interest of the organization and its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the delegate assembly hereby votes to call a special meeting of the members of the association to vote on the removal or recall of the following board members. Those board members would be Gary Burkle, the former treasurer, Sandra Guttnick, current secretary, and Mary Jo McElwayne, who is...or Mikel Wayne, who is currently serving as a board member. The next thing we're gonna do is open up the floor to the delegates. We've got one microphone on one side, one microphone on the other. Please, if you're going to speak, you know, get your hand up in advance so we can get a microphone over to you if one's available. And is there someone who would like to open?
I'll open.
Mike?
Okay, so it's been brought to...
Wait, 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 wait!
Oh, I thought that was picking me up.
No, sir.
You can't get it in again?
No, they're gonna pass one over to Mike.
They're gonna bring one to you.
They're passing it over.
Here's a mic for Mike.
I'm Mike.
I'm not Mike.
Hello? Okay, it's already been brought up and I'd like to get this dog done real quick. Anyone here as a delegate that is planning on running on the back of the recall for a board member needs to, in my opinion, declare now and recuse...
Recuse.
...themselves from this matter.
Mike's done. I'm going to make a comment and that is that I knew far before we started this recall process that Carly was going to run for the board. I don't feel that she needs to recuse herself simply for that reason.
Who is?
Carly.
I am.
Carly, yeah. Several months ago, Carly told me she was going to.
You've been a board master board?
Okay. No campaigning. No campaigning. Okay, who else has a comment? Jim?
Good morning, everyone. Jim Nichol, District 3. I have some comments if I may. I'm gonna start off that this process of looking for new companies to operate our property is pretty consistent with what we do in business. I've been on the board of directors for the Riverside Convention Bureau. We hired a new company for the convention center. I've also operated over 40 hotels. I've gone through the process and you want to use the best company that's out there and you compare them. That's what we do in business, just like we get three bids for every vendor that we have operating. On this, going out looking for bids, this was started in August. I've heard comments, this started recently. This is started in August. It's a slow process and it's still ongoing, so there's been no decisions made. I just want to be aware of that. And also, why are we recalling three members and not all five members? What is the criteria of these five members that three should be singled out and not the other two? Why? And we have two female ladies with a great representation on our community as a female... all you good ladies here, and yet we're removing the only two ladies we have on the board. I think it's disrespectful and it's not giving the voice of all the true community here. Thank you. And my understanding is that the FSR contract expires December 31st, so it is prudent to go out and look at other bids and compare. I'm just doing that with my car insurance. I have six bids and they're all less than what my insurance is, so it's very prudent. Thank you. And in the minutes of the open session...excuse me, just a moment. My notes are very quickly...my shorthand's not so good. I think in the minutes of the open session, it was all mentioned that the FSR's...I'm sorry, I lost my train on that one. I went short on my notes, but I think it was open in that discussion we had, that forum, that the process was there and it's been done properly, correctly, with timing involved. So I think we should go through the process of looking at all the vendors, what's is the best. And I recommend you look at the financials. Look at the lifestyle and see our numbers. Look at the financials, which I do. I have a five-year record and we need some help. We need some adjustments for the future, especially 2026. And not necessarily will a new company come in and raise our dues. We have set a budget and when the budget comes out, look at that budget and see what we're spending and where we're spending that. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your attention.
Say what?
Hello? Okay. Hi, Janice Rice. I'm gonna read this because I want to make sure I say it correctly. I've been hearing people, let the board do their job. They were elected, but we, the delegates... But we, the delegates, are also elected. We were elected by our neighbors, our residents, to represent them, us, everybody. If you follow the process, the residents communicate with their delegates. Delegates confer with the master board, and then the administration, or the delegate assembly, and then it goes on. Then the administration. This isn't the process that took place with CCL or this current agenda. All we are asking is to listen to everyone, slow down, do your due diligence, and make it transparent. There has been really no transparency to this entire movement. Thank you.
Marsha Midja with District 19. The board really does have every right to change management companies if they have a good, if they have good reasons to do so. Fiduciary responsibilities must come into play when planning a change as big as this. Please note that no concrete issues with the current management company have been provided to the members to justify the current decision to make a change. As of yet, the board has not officially notified the Chair of the Delegate Assembly to say they are slowing down the process, will put a procurement advisory committee in place to advise the board on the best company to manage our community, and will then make a final decision on whether to make the change or not. Then during the town hall presentation, Sandra covered seven categories in the RFPs with 47 topics that were important to our community. She stated that they have reviewed each topic submitted by the RFPs by vendor. This was done by Sandra and Mary Jo and two unnamed residents that are not board members. The RFPs were sent out August 28th to be returned by September 19th. The town hall presentation was November 10th, less than two months after the RFPs were returned. There just isn't enough time for the four designated people to complete a thorough review of the RFPs to make a sound, informed decision to make a change. So basically, due diligence must be done to prevent a financial disaster for the community for the foreseeable future. Sandra stated at the town hall that the board has decided to make the change. And then she got quiet. Gary stated his reasons, which are old issues that have been addressed. By a show of hands, per Ken Johnson's question to the audience at the town hall, the community indicated that the board should slow down the process and complete an in-depth review of each RFP in a meticulous, thorough, and appropriate manner. Board members are held to a higher standard and must fulfill their duties of loyalty, due diligence, and confidentiality. Loyalty must be to all community members of Sun Lakes Country Club and not to any individual or personal agenda. Transparency in this process should be a top priority, considering the contract with CCL was pushed through without the proper process or due diligence needed to reduce the losses in the food and beverage operation. Unfortunately, their original contract has resulted in a million dollar loss per year. Probably more than that. So again, the board has the right to make a change, but they have to do it using the correct process. At this point in time, the board has not officially notified the Chair that they are slowing down the process. Thus why we are here today. Thank you.
Mike, I'm going to wait until everybody, by rules of debate, you can't speak a second time until everybody's had a chance to speak the first time. Okay? Anyone else? Gail?
Thank you. Gail Billig, District 7. I do want to address the Facebook comments out there. I am one who did get up and speak and asked that the board please follow the process. That does take more than two months. Having been involved in the California Teachers Association Board of Directors for nine years, having gone through similar situations, you can't do it thoroughly and do it properly in two months. It doesn't happen. Never, in my presentation, I did not ask that FSR be retained. I did ask that they be given the fair chance that everybody else is getting. And that the, if, while they are in place, are they getting a chance to resolve issues that current board members have? That was all I asked. I do have a couple of questions, though, and I know we probably won't get an answer. I'm concerned that the ad hoc committee with Mary Jo and Sandra has not been brought to the open session for the community to know who else is sitting on that committee. I've asked the question several times to different people, and I'm not getting an answer. So I don't know why a secrecy on a committee. We've not had that before. So I do have a concern with that. Make sure, and as Joe said, they are moving forward. They're not slowing down. They're interviewing today. The majority of people in the town hall did request that they slow down. They're choosing not to? Or what we had said was, if you choose not to and respect the community, we will move forward. And that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Tammy?
Hello, Tammy Alexander, District 16. I would just like to say, as Joe's...
It's on, just closer.
Oh, okay. As Joe said, there was an email blast that went out that the board is looking for applications for the procurement advisory committee, the PAC. So in my eyes, they listened to what we said at the town hall, and they are taking that into consideration. And to me, they are slowing down. So how much slower do they need to slow down? And why do you keep going on with this recall? Why don't you give them the chance to review the committee that they're putting in place and see what happens from there? They're doing what you asked. And also, to Jim Nichol's point, why are there only three board members that are being recalled and not all five? We'd like an explanation on that, please. Thank you.
Anyone else? B?
B Mercado, District 15. This is a hard decision to make. I, myself, am in a dilemma. Do I go with my constituents on the district delegate assembly seat? Or do I, do I listen to the other side and think that maybe they might have something to say as far as the opposition? Which I am open to hear and listen to as long as I feel that I am also being heard if I have an opposing view. And at this point, I think there's a lot of animosity, a lot of distrust. One question I have is, if this is so important, where are the three other board members that possibly should be, be here, present to hear all of this going on? Because you have residents here who have opposing views, who are on their side. You have issues that come up and questions that they might be able to take back and think about before they make any decisions. They should be here present to listen to us if they really value our input. And as a district representative for 15, I did so voluntarily. I did so because I wanted to make, I wanted to be helpful. I wanted to do something for others and be a voice for them. I received one phone call against our recall process. I intercepted a message to other districts from one of my residents and gave her credit for putting it out there. And I have the best intentions to represent my neighborhood. I am responsible for bringing truth and fairness to their attention. I want the board, I want the management team to do the best as far as their process. Are you following what steps are necessary and proper to make your decisions that are going to affect all of us, not just for this year, but for five and 10 or 20 years later? So I also am in favor of slowing down. Take a step back. Maybe come to some kind of a compromise where some delegate representatives meet with the board in session, private, and come to some kind of an agreement as to timeline, as to transparency, so that people know what's going on ahead of schedule, not afterwards. And I must call you to the, I must call you to the... All right. So on the town hall, at the town hall, at the end of the town hall, you really did not make any statement in favor of or opposing to any of what was presented at the town hall, whether it was audience participation, your board members' presentation. It was almost as if you did not want to take a stance. And I was taken aback by that because as a president, you have one way or another to say, let's do the right thing. Let's listen. Let's come together. And instead, I heard no commitment. So I'm questioning whether you think that maybe this is the end of your term, so it's not going to take, make any impact. And I'm saying that you have until January. And so I would appreciate you stepping up to the bat more. I'm done.
I'll answer your question. At the town hall, there was a lot of good coming from both sides, I thought. I entered in, as a board member with one vote, I entered into an agreement to go to bid to see what the market would bear for the community. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less. I've sat on many interviews with potential companies, including FSR, on more than one occasion. The next step in the process, I believe, is legal representation, and then we start to do some onsite visits at some of the other properties. So at this time, I'm still looking for what's best for Sun Lakes. What's best for Sun Lakes is the best services that we can possibly have at the best price. And I have not made a determination in my heart on how I'll vote as of yet. So I guess that's probably why I didn't say anything the other day. I'm still down the middle because I'm still in the exploratory stages. I haven't been to any other properties yet. I don't know what they look like. I've, I've read everything. I've interviewed people. I've brought people out here and gave them tours of our facility over the last two months. But at this time, my heart is still right in the middle for Sun Lakes. If we find better services at a better price, then I think we bring that to the community. If we don't, then we work harder with FSR. That's my stance.
It's out of line, but can I ask Mr. Gennino or Mr. Walter why the board would not consider FSR's last and final offer for a contract revision that provided significant benefits to the community? Hang on. For those of you who are saying, what am I talking about? FSR made a proposal to Sun Lakes to retain their services contract here at Sun Lakes. It offered significant concessions to us, and those concessions had value in greater than a half million dollars. The board rejected the proposal outright, not because it was a bad proposal, but because it came from FSR. Okay, Joe says it's not true.
No, no final decision has been made as of this time. You know, we're, we're looking at all considerations, and that's a very interesting one. And it's financially in, in our interest to consider that because of the significant difference between that and other offers from other companies. But no decision has been made. So that's all I can say at, at this time. Sorry.
Thank you, and I stand corrected. Okay? Okay. Who else hasn't spoken? Ann, I don't believe, has spoken.
Thank you. Ann Hofer, District 12. This is very difficult. We, as a delegate assembly, have to be judge and jury. We were elected to represent our districts, to be for the people, to be there to help them, liaison for the board. This is very difficult, to see our votes that the people have made get stopped by a recall. I've been on the fence. I've been like B. I, I've kind of went one way and then went the other. But I didn't like the spending that we've done this year to the board. I'm addressing this now. I didn't like the spending that we've done. We have a clock tower. Okay? We, we are now looking at spending $40,000 to $60,000 for lawnmowers for the golf course. How many? Maybe four, maybe six, maybe eight? I don't know. But that's an awful lot. We have three out there, or four now, right, out there right now. I don't agree. I don't agree with the board. I think the board should have stood up for us as residents to keep our assessment down. I truly believe that you didn't do your job as a board member to fight hard enough for us to have our assessments lowered. That's truly how I believe. And as far as a recall, it's all or none. But I can see all or none would be too much. So it would be the new ones, I would think, would need to go, and, and the senior board members stay to keep this boat afloat. But the way it's going right now, it's not that way. And I'm really, really upset and on the fence. It upsets me.
Linda?
I've been involved in some capacity since 2012 with the leadership in Sun Lakes. It's been my pleasure to represent the residents. And since 2012, I am aware or that there is, has been no transparency from the board to the community. Things are done, and the community, most of the community just goes along because they're just here because they're retired and they don't want to be involved. But those of us who are involved want to know what is happening. Every Meet the Candidate Forum has stressed, I'm going to be transparent. And yet, so many people in Sun Lakes are not aware of the things that we are talking about, problems that we're talking about. They complain about the restaurant. They're not aware of the, the process that we went through to get a new company. They just want, wanted a change. The town hall about the change in management companies, to me, was a sham. It was a farce. It was a lecture by Sandra in how a HOA should go about choosing a management company. She didn't present the board's views on what was going on. It was just telling us how it should be done. And it was beautifully done. I think it was probably influenced by AI personally. But I was extremely disappointed in the fact that we don't know why the board is making decisions that they make. I'm a lame duck anyway because I'm retiring at the end of this month. But I had to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, lame duck.
Charlie London, District 23. My concern is the transparency thing. It seems like we're putting out these RFPs prior to even knowing that we have a problem. The community does not know that you're dissatisfied with their services, yet you went out and interviewed seven companies or whatever you interviewed prior to even the town hall. Now, that's not correct. Now, that's not correct. That's not transparency. You did that with CCL. You signed those agreements, I'm not saying you, but the board did, and that was not right either. We had no input into those two contracts, and if we look like, if a deal's already been made with First Residential not to use them, we would be really disappointed. Thank you.
Hi, Carly Beeks, District 14. And I don't know if you know, it's out there, but here's an RFP that the board put out regarding getting a new management company, and they stayed on here. They wanted the contract to go live January 1st, 2026. So to me, it's like, they're not slowing down. They're rushing it, and they're doing the best they can to get it through. And I'm voting to eliminate three of those board members because those three are the ones that are attached to this RFP. Thank you.
The voice of Sun Lakes, Anita Lawrence.
Anita Lawrence, District 18. Being a delegate is not an easy job. When I stepped up to be a volunteer, it was much to the dismay of my husband. But we keep ourselves informed. We attend board meetings, we speak with our residents, we handle things behind the scenes that no one ever knows that we've taken care of. We're just always looking out for the best interests of the community and our residents. As Bob stated, this year's budget has already been passed. If this board rushes forward and hires a new company who may charge a significantly higher fee to us, we can expect to see some kind of additional charges, may it be monthly HOA fees or a one-time fee. CCL has been a disaster, brought to you by this board. We don't need two disasters to deal with. So it's my recommendation that we slow down, take a good, hard look at all these companies that have submitted RFPs to determine what is best for Sun Lakes. Thank you.
Linda Spalding, District 17. I have been here 22 years. I have seen seven general managers. I have seen two management companies. And just on a side note, I put in my computer how to, how to look at a new management company for the HOA Association. I forgot how I worded it. And pretty much, it came out an AI-generated document, almost identical to what Sandra spoke about. You can put anything in and get wonderful presentations, so. My question is, and these are the things that I hope we are doing, and that is comparing the RFPs. We have to look at the percentage that we pay for payroll fees. I believe when we took on First Service, we were at 8%. And I believe now, our number is close to 4%. That's huge. That's huge, because no other company would match that. And I don't know what the contract is for the other companies. We're going to pay with new companies in the long run. Are they going to keep our employees? It's a silly question because they're leaving on their own. I feel really, really bad about that. The management fee, we pay fifty-eight thousand or fifty-something thousand a month, correct me? It's in the 50s?
No, fifteen.
Fifteen. What are the other RFPs coming back at? What are the other contracts coming back? If we get a new company, are they going to buy out the CCL contract? Because I believe First Service Residential said they would. That's huge. FSR is willing to pay that amount of money to get rid of them. They're so bad for our, our community. When I was on the board, we had to get rid of Associa. We had six months, no financial documents, no reports. We stopped paying Associa their management fee, and we still did not get any financial reports. We have never, to this day, and I'm going to just go by what I know, had this kind of problem with First Service Residential. They guaranteed us financials within a five-day, six days, six to 10-day, 10-day work week. That's unheard of. Are the other companies going to do that? I don't know, because I haven't seen. Somebody brought up, recall all five. I'm for recalling all three because they seem to be the toxic ones. If you recall all five, we have no stability on the board. Even if you recall four, you should have one person for stability on the board to at least run our meetings and, and do the recall. There's a lot to think about. This is not going to get done in 30 days, 30, 45 days. So I agree with my fellow delegates. This is very, very hard for us. We are going to be called, everything in the book, and it's already happened to me. And we are just trying to do what's right for the community. So we have to slow down. If we don't, if we do not renew First Service contract by December 31st, we can still go month to month, so we can take our time and do what's right. I'm asking my delegates, please do what's right for our community, and slowing the process isn't a wrong decision.
Okay, I'm going to speak as a delegate from District 21. I want to come back to the fact that what we're, what most of the comments I hear are about the merits of this proposal versus that proposal, and again, this is a board decision. We need really not concern ourselves with that. We are concerned with the process by which they are proceeding. It comes back to timing. Again, it always comes back to timing. It's very hard to believe that the master board is taking input from a PAC committee that isn't even there. It's hard to believe that that PAC committee would be reconstituted and being able to provide advice before this deadline at the end of the year or before contracts are signed. I think the master board would do well to reconstitute the PAC committee by inviting every member that served on it previously, when it did function, to come back. It's the quickest way to put a working group back in order. But that, again, is a board decision. That's not a decision we get to make. I would also like to say that there is no urgency to have anything done by the end of the year. They can renew the contract with FSR in the, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, in FSR's contract, it can be terminated with 30-day notice. Chris says that's correct. That means they could actually renew the FSR contract. It could be terminated 30 days' notice anytime, any year. So there is no urgency on the part of the board to push this forward. And who else? Jess?
I just have a couple of questions. What's the likelihood that the board will be united for the benefit of the community? In the past, I had this understanding that the master board was divided. So do we, to me, transparency is very important when you vote, when you vote, to me, transparency is very important when you vote on an RFP. And would you be transparent in giving your reasons why you voted yes or no? And will you be objective? I mean, I'm, I was called to serve my district and seen, and when I was called to serve my district, I did the best I can. And I'm hoping that there is no emotional animosity among the five of you. Because if you're divided, it will be at the expense of the community.
Anyone else before Jim goes a second time? Where Mike goes a second time? Mike was the first one wanting to go the second time, so.
I listened well to everything that was said here. I've listened well to what was said on Facebook. I've listened well to my community. I must say that it's about a 99 to one, 99 to one that we don't do recall. And one of the main objections is the money. I don't know, I think number one is, they mentioned the 15 grand to run a vote. It's in the dark, who's going to be, because we're going to have a recall vote plus a vote for a board member to be added in their place in another two months or less. We're going to have another vote for Bob's not returning, I understand, and I don't know if Joe is or not. Joe is not. So that means we'd have five new board members. They don't like that idea. They feel it's, the whole thing's over getting rid of First Service. They don't like that. The one thing I want to say is, I like and respect all my fellow delegates, but I heard, and I don't think a recall should be based on opinion instead of fact. And somebody telling me that, somebody telling me how quick, long, short, what the timeframe is to interview future management companies, I don't know how they do that, you know? I've done many bids, many RFPs. Depends on the complexity of it. It depends on how detailed you're going to get. I would feel much better, and in other situations like this, I would think we would have legal, our own master board, legal counsel, that would represent them, that are knowledgeable about HOAs of this size. I've been on several boards of HOAs, very small, little condominium, 160, 120 maybe units, you know? We're talking a city of 3,327, okay? Which makes a population, if you just pair them up, at, you know, around 6,000 community. That's pretty big. And I guess I just can't see how we would go through a complete revision of our board. If you remember right, the election pretty much for the Sandra and Mary Jo, Gary'd already been on the board, and then Pat was there. Pat? Was about transparency and that people felt that the board was one-sided towards First Service. And that was a big issue in that election. I don't know if you remember that or not, but that's what I was thinking was the case. So anyway, I don't like opinion to dictate a recall election. I don't like the fact that these volunteers are being, trying to be pushed out. I think they're, I don't think those board members have anything that they're trying to hurt our Sun Lakes Country Club with. And that's, that's my opinion, District 22, and that's how I've read my community, and I have, I have talked to people in my community and others. Thank you.
I feel that there has not been transparency as far as this RFP goes. I feel that some of the board members have their own agendas that they're following and are not looking at the best interests of Sun Lakes. There is no reason to recall two of the board members because their terms are ending. So what would be the point of that? I just feel that what has been stated is correct, that they should slow down and listen to a PAC that has lots of experience and knows what they're doing. I don't know that the people that are on the board have as much experience in going through an RFP as they should. And it should be slowed down because it is very complex, and it's going to cost Sun Lakes a lot of money if it's not done right. Thank you.
Jim Nichol, District 3. Again, I deciphered my shorthand. I just want to say, when we brought up about CCL, in April, when that vote was taken for them, three of these folks were not on the board because they were in the election in April. And just to say that in February, if we do a recall vote, there's a $15,000 fee. And then we have, three members are up for reelection in April. That's another $15,000. All these candidates got great votes when we had the election back in April, and I think the residents should make the decision, not us. We are representatives. But our residents should make that because they voted for these folks. That's transparency, and that's fairness. I also just wanted to note, if we recall these folks, realtors have to disclose that our board is under recall. That's going to affect future sales. You can look it up on your phones right now. It's right on there, the state of California. They have to disclose that our board is under recall. What does that show? That shows instability. We don't need that. And what kind of community do we have? This is fact. This is not conjecture. And, and another thing, we've had these meetings going on about recalling these three folks. It seems to me that those three were rogue and decided to go out and get FRPs, but the other two members on the board knew nothing about it. Am I interpreting that, or is that just?
That's not true. We all, we all agree.
You did. Then so everybody should be as responsible for getting the FRPs, which is a good business decision. Thank you, I wanted just to make that point. That's all I have. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it.
Jane.
Jane Dobson, District 10. I've been on both sides of the fence. I've had lengthy debate with myself for the last couple of weeks and some sleepless nights, which, that's my problem, not anybody else's. I did solicit my district's thoughts, opinions, knowledge, and I thought I had my mind made up when I came into this room. But again, I'm on both sides of the fence. But the real thing that I want to express is that this issue in general has divided the community. Whichever way we vote, I mean, it's an open vote. Everybody will know how I vote. Somebody will say, oh, you did the wrong thing, you did the right thing, thank you. I think, you know, after this meeting, after this vote, however we proceed, we need to just move forward and respect our neighbors and not get into a real tiff. just move forward and respect our neighbors and not get into a real tiff. So I am looking forward to the residents' time to give their opinions.
Anita needs to leave. Do you want to say something before you go? Are you going to let Michelle fill your seat? Michelle's going to take over for you. Okay.
Yes. I apologize. I have to leave for a very important medical appointment, so I'm turning my seat over to my alternate. So she will be voting for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Marcia.
Just a quick reminder. Jim was talking about the residents having the opportunity for their say. What this recall does is set in motion, and basically, an election. They will have their voice. They will make their vote. They will decide whether we recall or we don't. We're just setting this in motion to make sure that everybody understands that everything that we're saying here is noted and that going forward is up to each individual homeowner to make the decision as to whether we recall or not.
I'll come right back to you. Chris, since none of us have had a recall ballot before, would you please take a moment and detail what, if this goes forward, what people would be looking at so that they understand the sequence of events on directors?
So in the case for the... Let's talk about what the ballot would look like. There would be two portions of it. One would say at question one, with the recall, if this is approved today, with the recall of X members, and their names would be listed, do you vote to recall them or not? Yes or no? Then there would be a question two of if question one majority passes, please select three, two, whoever, how many positions are being recalled. There would be names of members to checkmark next to, or mark that you'd like them to take the place of the departed board through a recall. So that's what the ballot would look like. There are two pieces. And so what happens is, is if this passes, this then goes to the board to set the date and the inspectors of election for this. There will... It will follow very similarly to what our normal election process is. There's a call for candidates. Those people interested in running for this special election, they would go to admin, pull papers, sign documents, return those documents. There would then be a member of record date, people who are at the community at this time living here. That's the cutoff point. And then there's the mailing 30 days in advance of the election. So the quickest possible timing of this is 90 days. The special election would occur in February. There's a date in February, inspectors of election will have to finalize. But that would go on during this time. So that is the special election, what the ballot would look like and the timing of it if that... if this were to pass.
Thank you. And the normal mailing date on the regular election in April is the first part of March. So the next month, another ballot would be received. I have one question for you because I didn't hear it specified. There will be... If it passes, there will be three names on the recall ballot. Are those voted in or out as a block, or are they voted for individually?
They would be voted out as a block. That would be if you vote for that resolution that you have, whatever names are on that, those names will be listed and it will be voted out as a block on that of these are the three names, four names, two names, one name, whatever. That will be the listing of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm coming back to Gail.
I just... Gail Billick, District 7. I just had one more quick question or comment. It was brought up that you've asked for applications for the PAC, which I'm happy about. But when Joe laid out what's happening, they are still interviewing. Then they go to legal. Then they do the onsite visits. Nowhere in there is the discussion of even using the PAC. So that's what we're looking for. Using the PAC and using the people that have the experience. So we slow down the process, get all of the facts before a decision is made. Focus on the attention, all of our attention on CCL, and let's get that right before we move on.
Going this way.
Michelle Walter, alternate for District 18. I think we all need to take a very close look at this and make sure you know what my vote is going to be. And I have to vote exactly the way Anita has asked me to vote. I cannot vote my own. I have to vote exactly the way she wants me to vote. I think that we do need to slow down. I don't think that the board has done their due diligence in actually going and visiting all the sites. Have we gone and looked at the reviews on the management companies that they're looking at? Have we done what we are supposed to be doing as a board? I think some of the board members are, and I think you know who they are. They're the ones that you're not recalling. And I think that you guys have not given Joe his fair share in what he's trying to do for our community. You're lumping him in with everybody else. And because he doesn't answer your questions right away, you get upset. He doesn't have to answer your questions. You can contact him at a later date, and then maybe he can say something to you. The same thing with Bob. But I think we need to get this recall going. That's my opinion.
Kate Reed, District 20. I just want to say that I agree with Gail, that I think that the procurement advisory committee should be put in place. And then the experience and the wisdom of those people could be drawn on. We have a wealth of information here in Sun Lakes with all the people and all their experiences. Almost everybody that has spoken have said, I ran a company. I was on major boards. I was with the California Teachers Association. So there's a wealth of information here that we need to incorporate into the major decisions, even the minor decisions, that we... that come before our board. So I think that we need to put the procurement, the PAC in place and listen to what they have to say. This was... This action was not followed when the decision for CCL was made. And I know that three of those board members were not on the board at that time. So why do we have the procurement advisory committee? And apparently, they felt they weren't being listened to because they all resigned en masse. Really? That says something very loud and clear. We need to use the resources that we have here in Sun Lakes.
Jim, you've spoken twice. You have to hold on. Yes, they will. Hang on, we got to finish. Residents will get a chance to speak. They will speak as soon as this debate or has ended. We've got... Everybody has an opportunity to speak twice, and then we're going to stop. So who has not spoken twice that would like to say something? Who is a delegate? Okay. I think we're at that point. Jim, you'll have an opportunity later on. We'll bring this back up. So we're going to open... First of all, I should say to everyone, because of the technical abilities of this particular facility, the... This was not livestreamed, nor was it broadcast live on Channel 97. It is being video recorded, and that video will be uploaded to the web, and it will be shown on Channel 97 at a later date. So we're going to move to member comments at this time. I will caution... You will be timed as a member. You will have three minutes to say what you need to say. If you exceed that time, I will ask you to politely conclude your comments. And I would actually ask you to refrain from emotional outbursts, and please watch your language and keep it relevant to our topic. So I'm going to start with something that Charlie... I'm sorry, Charlie Fries butted in front of everybody. He sent me this. I told him I would read it. This is from Charlie Fries on Riviera. He said, "I would appreciate if you can..." Reading this into the minutes. "I would attend this meeting to state my position, but my wife is having back surgery. Especially considering the nastiness of our last election for master board, this recent past, I cannot understand why this event is even being considered. I would also note that in the recent meeting at the main clubhouse surrounding the potential replacing FSR, I believe that the last five minutes of the meeting was the most telling about the unworthiness of FSR to continue as our management company, as presented by Gary Burkle, treasurer or formal treasurer. I believe that neither FSR nor CCL should have been hired in the first place. I will wait for broadcast on Channel 97." And now, I'm going to walk around the room. No one did. Okay. Unhear what you just heard. Everybody... You didn't hear anything. I said nothing. Nothing. Sergeant Schultz. I'm going to walk around the room. If you've got something you want to say, I'm going to try to do... Carly needs to say something first. Oh, you're going to work that side.
I'll work this side.
Thank you. I'll work that... this side. So... And who's timing, please? B is timing. Okay. Okay. All right. And you are.
I'm Bill Hobbs, 23-year resident. The concerns that I have, number one for me was CCL. I'm sorry, CCL was my biggest concern. I just think the expenditure for the residents is tough, you know? And the sandwich is fine, just like Four Seasons had their copper kettle, and they have something similar now. But they just don't have the liquor license. So for those people which are under FSR as well, it seems to work that they have the catering for events and the BYOB type thing, okay? But that's for them, I'm just saying, okay? But I think we can certainly downsize. Keep those expenses down. Yeah. So, you know, I do support having a facility onsite where, you know, we can have food, beverages, that type of thing. But not that the extent of CCL, what they're doing, with the pricing and et cetera. Pardon? Oh, okay. All right. I apologize. Okay. On the recall, my biggest concern is, I personally am very pleased with FSR. And my biggest concern would be the on-the-job training, OJT, of a new company. The expenditure of a new company. It just takes too much time. It really does. And the 23 years I've been here, I, you know, I've been happy with what we've had, particularly FSR. Thank you. Sorry about the mix-up.
From the other side. Denise.
Hi, Denise. Hi, Denise Lockston, District 21.
Hold the microphone like you're eating an ice cream cone.
Denise Lockston, District 21. I've been taking some notes, and I just, you know, we've got the procurement advisory committee memo that the board sent on the 13th because you asked them for it. And you're not even giving them a chance to get this committee in place before you're trying to recall them. You said, "We'll recall you if you don't do it." Well, they did it. And maybe you can get a written unanimous consent from them, saying they are going to go through with that, and they are going to use the PAC to facilitate this bid. Also, you also said, the other motion that you guys passed was for Sun Lakes HOA under the specific policies created to achieve optimum results. You didn't give the board any time to even work on a govern... To even follow the governance policy, to even put it on their board agenda. Maybe you can get a unanimous written consent from them that they will do that, that they will follow through. You talk about them pushing through FSR. It seems like you're pushing through this recall fast. And it's just... It just seems like it's really fast. And Tammy said, you know, give them another chance. Give them a chance to actually do what you had the motions for, what you asked them to do. You should give them a chance. And with regard to $4.50 per household for the recall cost, have you... Does that include all the attorney's fees and legal fees that's going to cost us for this recall vote? Because that's usually what happens when there's a recall. There's somebody that's going to complain. There's going to be lawsuits, or you're going to have to have legal advice. And it's going to cost us more money. And the other thing, District 1, you said that the reason why the three are being recalled is because... That the reason why the two are staying is because their term ends in '26. Mary Jo's term ends in '26. So if you go on that aspect of it, she should not be recalled because her term ends in '26. The only people that go through '27 are Burkle and Gook of the Nick. And the other thing is that somebody asked, how many of these delegates are going to pull papers and are going to run after this recall if this recall election goes through? I'd like you to take a poll here with everybody here present, everybody that's going to pull papers, to say their name and not... And recuse themselves. And we'd like to know how many delegates are actually planning to run for these positions that you are trying to recall. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Savage, District 15. This room says it all. You walk into this room, three-quarters of the room is being taken up by the district delegates. You leave your residents standing, even the person with the walker. You leave your residents standing because you want to recall the only three people who are not going to stay on the board. When she said that there's two people coming off, Joe and Bob, you're recalling the three, which means you're recalling the entire board. Number two, it also means, we talked, what, two and a half hours? Okay for you guys? We're going to get three minutes for each of us. What I'm saying to you is, you have no interest in the people who are standing. You could not even provide them with an agenda when they walked in the door. You could have easily sat closer, easily divided the room, allowed many more people to stand. I am on topic of whether or not you care about what your residents say, or is this only what the delegates want to keep FSR? Thank you.
Carly.
Hello. Diane Arhus, District 10. First of all, I'd like to say the delegates, your job is the hardest. I would never want to be a delegate. And I applaud you. You guys work really hard. With that said, everyone's talking about slowing down, and it seems to me like the delegates are doing a rush job on the recall. The timing, the timing is, when we think about it, we're talking about this recall being within a month of the regular election. And that does not make sense logistically to me, especially with the expense of it. And I didn't even think... Is that... Is your name Jack? Jim? Okay. He made such a good point, just how it looks if we have to disclose to someone, whoever's selling their house, we have to disclose the board is under recall? If that is accurate? If that is accurate, then that's... Then that's not good. Anyway, especially with what's going on. For this to happen so close to an election, almost overlapping, I'm... That just doesn't make sense to me. That's all.
Mary Laurie, District 20. This is the worst time to do any kind of recall. Thanksgiving, Christmas, who is... Who's going to be home to make their vote heard? People will be out of town. People are visitors. They don't want to vote. They've got enough work to do to get ready for Christmas and Thanksgiving. So this is the wrong time to do what you're thinking of doing. And I think you need to slow down.
Hi, I'm Ramiun Kretschman. I'm in District 7. I was also a former delegate. More importantly, I am a previous member from the Political Action Committee, or Procurement Advisory Committee, sorry. Business mentality. And I want you to know that I really am grateful for this delegate. And if not been a delegate, which I have, it's a difficult position. And Joe, I appreciate that you're trying to represent the community. And I want to state to all of you that you need to look on the website. They have an RFP, that's what they're calling it, and it barely meets the requirements for an RFP. But in there, all of you delegates that are saying, "Slow down," to the delegates, the board needs to... board needs to slow down. On their RFP, they clearly state that it goes into effect January 1st, 2026. So I encourage you all to read it, and they also have the one for CCL. And I believe, that's where they put all their documents. Anyhow, you can read them. I encourage you to all look there and educate yourself. And Chris, I have a question. I believe they took the procurement manual off the website and declared it defunct now? So that also says a lot.
The manual has been taken down. It's not in effect right now.
Okay. That's what I thought. I understand.
The manual that was developed by the previous Procurement Advisory Committee has been removed from the website, and Chris says that the board has, saying that they are not using it at this moment in time.
Anyhow, thank you to the delegates.
And Joe says that's because there's no members.
This takes courage, and I thank you for allowing the community to speak out with their vote, and that's what they're doing. And I don't think they're rushing anything. I think this is absolutely necessary, so thank you.
Thank you all very much. My name is Mark Rowe. I'm in District 10. Gene Dobson, thank you for what you do, and all the delegates, thank you. It's a thankless job. And I also want to thank the board for volunteering, even though I don't always agree with them. I wouldn't want that job either, so thank you to everybody. I've only been a resident here for a little more than four years, but my family's been here since inception. So I've been coming to Sun Lake since it was started. Frankly, I had my decision made when I walked in the door, although I'm glad I came here because listening has opened my mind. And Gene, thank you for suggesting I do this. I was mad, and I initially said, "Recall, recall, recall," right away, and now I'm realizing that if the board will agree to make sure the Procurement Advisory Committee goes back into effect and uses them to make this important decision, I think we need to give them the time to do so, if they agree to do that. And I like the suggestion that they should come out with a statement that says, "We are going to do that," and then the recall can be put on hold because that would be terribly disruptive. Thank you.
I want to thank the delegates as well. It's a, a difficult task you have, and particularly today, it's a very difficult task. But what you need to do is consider what you're doing and what the impact will be. What will happen if we eliminate three of the board members, and then in election next year, you'll have trouble trying to find anyone to run because of this uncertainty in this community with the delegates and questionably the residents? I have a question of the delegates. Have you looked at the financials in detail? Have you, do you understand them? If you did look at them in detail and you did understand them, there would be no question about why FSR should be looked at as a problematic in the financial area. It's very important that you understand that. We have lost a lot of money over the, just over the last five years, never mind the past years they've been in. You need to understand that that's decision you make is for the future of this community because you're gonna have a real problem finding good people to get on the board. Thank you.
Harry Fagan, District 17. If you recall these three board members, we're gonna have five new board members in April. If you recall these three members, one of them's term is up in six weeks after you vote to recall. That doesn't make any sense, and you're gonna be spending $30,000 to $40,000 on two elections going on at the same time. Thanksgiving, Christmas are coming up. They pull papers in January for the new board, and you're gonna vote after that to do a recall. This doesn't make any sense. Slow down the process. As far as the Procurement Advisory Committee, the last board made of a great individual, Bob President, Randy Robbins, Vice President, Beverly was on that board. Thank you. Procurement Committee did not like what they said, so they all quit. This board, they did all quit. This board is gonna react to a, to a new one. They're gonna pick a new one.
I'm Mike Scott. I'm in District 7. Please remember that just because the delegates vote for recall, if they do, it doesn't mean they're immediately recalled. We've got a process to go on, and if during that process, the board starts doing the right things as outlined by several people, the PAC and other things, if the board starts doing that, everyone can get the word out, vote no on the recall, and we keep the same board. That is a possibility that it would occur. Now, I think the board has done some good things, but I also think they've done some bad. The clock tower, I thought, was a very good idea, but I think they struck out on the Cheers Bar, and they struck out on CCR, and I hope that if they do try to make a change with first service, that that's three strikes, and that's why I think they should be out. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Ken Johnson, Birdie Drive, District 22. I'm the guy that said, "Raise your hands, let's slow down." I'd like to have Joe and Bob do the following. You've already heard from some people inside the room. I think you need to make an announcement. You need to do it before the November board meeting, that you're going to stop the process. You're gonna legally file and send a letter to all the current providers of IRP, which you can do, that you want to have it sent to the PAC. Does it mean that you're going to, your RFP is gonna be stopped, and that you allow the PAC, which has no members yet, and I think I will apply for that, to help out, based on decision that you're going to stop and get the board from doing all the review. The board did an excellent job so far, but I think you need to stop the process, give it to PAC, let the PAC put everything together for you, and then you guys go do your appropriate due diligence. I think you would gain a lot of respect from the community and from people that are in here to do that process. So hopefully, you two can take back to your other board members that you've heard from the community, that you want to pause the RFP process, legally send to all the RFP participants that you need to do this. You will get enough people on the PAC because you're gonna allow them to put together the appropriate documentation. We've got a good infrastructure that the board has been doing. We take that, we present the recommendations back to you, and then you, the board, can do your due diligence. We've slowed it down, we've gained transparency, and I bet a lot of people in this room would say that that's the best thing to do, based on that occurring. Thank you.
Rick McCard, District 7. I look around me and I see a lot of friendly faces because I'm in so many clubs. So what I'm gonna say is probably gonna make just about both sides equally unhappy. So I went to the board meeting the last time I was there. I found out about it occurring from one of my friends, actually, about a week before it was going to happen, and I came to find out that the board was getting really close to making a decision that I wasn't even aware of. And there isn't much transparency. I know that's been said by a lot of people. A lot of things have been done, and I heard a wonderful presentation by Sandy. Great detail, great presentation, but the thought kept out in my mind, and it's still there. It seemed at the time like it was a solution in search of a problem. So why don't we figure out what we can do to solve the problem without making a wholesale change? So, that's my pox on the board for doing that. Now let me get to the other side. Naturally, in response to all of that, you guys have taken upon yourself to feel, to realize, "We must act now. We must change everything around," and as a result, we're going to have chaos come the early spring when we've got so many elections going on at the same time and so many changes being made. What we need to do is, everybody in this room, don't wait for the other person to throw the first shoe. Reach out to each other, find out what makes the most sense, make things work. I'm reminded of what the revolutionaries said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." We need to take action, not to do this on one side, not to do that on the other side, but to come together and decide what needs to be done that's best for our community. Thank you.
Hi Denise Baker from District 23. I think I kinda hear like a little bit of a majority going on what's happening for our council here, but I think one of the things that we should all realize is that there's just not a lot of our community that's in these rooms. There's, there's so, there's so many people out there in our communities that are not giving their voices, or they're not understanding, or they're not, or they're just listening to what is on Facebook. And I really believe that it's our due diligence as part of this community to get out to our neighbors and help them understand what it is that everyone's talking about. I do see, I do not see a real advantage in spending the money to turn around and do this recall, but what I don't understand is that those individuals that you're trying to recall are from the Finance Committee. You loved them when they were on the Finance Committee, so I'm not really sure what happened to that whole thing. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm ignorant and not, don't understand that part of it, but I don't understand why all of a sudden the change has happened like that. I myself am sorry to see Joe go because I thought that he brought a little bit of new life to the board and had some good ideas. And the other thing that is concerning to me is that there's so many people in here talking about RFPs. Not one single person has said anything about an addendum. An addendum. You, we all go out for RFPs. We put our, we put them in place. We bring on our construction teams or our individuals that, that win the bid, but not a single person has said anything about, we all know that when those people come in and win those contracts, there's issues. The RFP is not foolproof. It's not 100%. It does not cover every little thing that's going to happen when you put a company into place. So what, why has no one mentioned anything about an addendum?
One minute.
About an addendum to help these people grow towards what we want as a community? That's what I don't understand. Thank you.
I'm Dory Gartsky. I'm from District 12. Oh, thank you. Hopefully it'll stay that smile after I finish talking. I've heard the word transparency a lot, and that comes up in every meeting regardless of who's holding the meeting. I personally believe that transparency involves more than just telling your residents or your members what you did or what you're planning to do. It involves giving them written documentation of why you are proposing to do something or why, or where it would benefit or harm the community. Something in writing, because until we had a town hall meeting, I honestly had no idea that the delegate assembly had gotten together and discussed amongst themselves this process of recall. My delegates certainly did not inform me. Had I been informed, I would have given my opinion on what I think of the recall, and maybe she would not have voted the way she did. But I'd like to see some of this transparency begin at a lower level with the delegates producing written documentation saying, "This is what we plan to do," or "This is why this is being done," because our residents don't go on Facebook and go on all of the electronic things to find out what's going on. They have to have a one-on-one interaction with their delegates. Now, moving on to the other part of how fast we are moving, I do agree that maybe we ought to just hold off a little bit. Let's go ahead and think about what's being done and see if we can ask the, the board to give the residents some more documentation of why are they looking at alternatives and what benefit we would get by selecting one of the other companies that they're looking at. We, we just don't have enough to make a decision. You can't just say, "Do you want to vote this way?" Or "Do you want to vote that way?" There has to be something behind it, and that comes with a lot more talking face-to-face with a resident. Thank you.
Julie Austin, District 22. I have the campaign flyers for Sandra Guknek and Mary Jo. I don't have Gary's, but on Sandra's flyer that I have right here, it says, "Management is not held accountable to the budget nor to controlling, to control spending. Accounting is fraught with errors month to month. With the change in food and beverage management, this is the time to explore alternative management for the HOA and remaining amenities." We voted her in, and that was her flyer. Here's Mary Jo's. I'm so nervous. My essential tremor. Relax. I'm going crazy. Relax. Okay, Mary Jo. "Acquire competitive bids for management of Sun Lakes." That's on her flyer. Oh my gosh. Relax, relax. Can't do this. Maybe somebody to lean on. Okay. Man, you'd think I'd have parking. "Many delegates have stated that they are undecided, so slow down and get the views Should the district delegates ask their residents' opinion before voting for an expensive recall? FSR has been here for seven years. In general, the majority of their work, to me, has been found negative with the loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Their management of the restaurant was so bad that CCL was hired. Speaking of CCL, as of October 1st, CCL is now capped at $65,000 per month that we, our bar money is spent, given to them, which is about one-third of the amount that Sun Lakes was paying them per month. So we have improved that. Let's see. So, this is an unusual thing. Is it still working?
Yeah.
No? No? Hello? Die. Pause my time, you guys. Hello? Die. Die. Just talk. Do you pause me? Hello? Okay. So for the management, for the, for the delegates to do a recall, it, the man, the master board was doing their due diligence and fiduciary responsibility to explore the possibility of changing the current management company. The community voted these people to the board, and the minute they don't agree or like what they do, you threaten them with a recall. Let the delegates ask their residents their opinions first, and that's all.
Thank you very much for the delegates and the board of directors for their service to ask the community. We really appreciate that. At the same time, one of the words we heard- Thank you very much for the delegates and the Board of Directors for their service to ask the community. We really appreciate that. At the same time, one of the words we heard today is, "Slow down, slow down, slow down." That's a good meditative word. So why don't we slow down on the recall also and see if the Master Board does a good job? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm a three-year resident, so I'm kind of a newbie, but I wanted to just say thank you for having this meeting. Clearly, it was important. Lots of people came. We needed more space. And I want to thank the delegate assembly for doing this work. I want to thank the Board members, too. If I was up for recall, I might think it would be complicated if I showed up to the meeting. And I'm not sure I would be wanted at the meeting. And so I don't want to bang on the three people that aren't here. So I want to give them grace, given that circumstance. My question and comment would be, there are a lot of houses in this place. There's only 20-some delegates. That means that they've got to see a whole lot of people in their district. Word of mouth is a great way to communicate, but you can also solicit input by using survey tools, Qualtrics, even Google Forms can give you good input that you can then gather and make informed decisions. So it gives people an easy way to give their feedback online. If they're not able to do that, then give them an email or give them a face-to-face opportunity. I think there's lots of ways we can have better input on a consistent basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, I'm George Meldrum. I'm in District 9. And I have served as a, thank you to all the delegates. I have served as a delegate, and I know how damn hard it is to do. It's a tough job, and I appreciate you guys stepping up to do it. However, I would ask all of you, how many residence doors that you've knocked on and explained that you were doing a recall? How many of your residents, how many of your residents have you actually talked to? Because I didn't even know about this recall. I didn't get contacted. I didn't get an email. I didn't know this was going on. And I understand that the procurement committee all resigned because they didn't feel like they were being listened to. But they're an advisory board. And if they don't agree with the Board, that's too bad. We elect the Board to make the decisions. Okay? If you don't like it, run for the Board, which I know some of you guys are doing. Okay? But at Christmas time, when everybody has enough stress, right? You guys, you guys want to have a recall election and have all this controversy going on when people are trying to observe the holidays, and I don't even think it's necessary, and I don't think it's what the residents want. Slow down. You don't need this recall. Let the Board do its job. If you don't like them, replace them. We've got an election coming up. Vote for someone else. Thank you.
I'm Ken Phillips from District Number 7, and I've been in here 15 years and don't know nearly as much as I wish I knew about all of this. But I understand that the residents of Sun Lakes voted for a Board, okay? But it sounds like we've got another Board that's sitting around these tables that feel that they have a lot of authority also. So my feeling is that if the Board is looking at some potential management companies to replace First Service, they need to let the delegates know the pluses and minuses, and then these delegates, and I'm not criticizing my delegate sitting in front of me, but those delegates need to kind of check with their residents and get some input. Once that input is reached, then I think the Board would then, from the delegates who have gotten it from the residents, would be able to make a good decision. I think a lot of us residents don't know a lot about the finances of First Service, and that's probably our own fault. But I will say one thing, I'm definitely against the $15,000 to have a special election now. We don't have any money in here. How are we going to spend that? So thank you, delegates, for coming, and thank you to everybody else that's come and put their two bits in.
I had to write mine down. I'm not as young as I used to be. My name, oh, I will. My name is Carol Tasco. I've been a resident of Sun Lakes for 39 years. I am a former Board member and of the Board, serving my community for four years, two of which I was President of the Board. My concern with the delegates is their approach to the issue at hand. Replacing FSR is a very worrisome thing to me. For 39 years, I've never seen a delegate assembly threaten the Board to a recall for doing their due diligence and fiduciary responsibility to explore the possibility to change our current management company. You voted these people to the Board, and the first time they do something you don't like or disagree with, you threaten them with recall. Let me ask you, delegates, did you do your due diligence and have meetings with your constituents and explain the issue and poll the people of your community on their opinions? Or is this just a personal decision on your part? When Mr. Burkle explained how FSR has impacted our finances in a negative way and how the Board renegotiated their contract two years ago to give them a chance to correct those issues, I listened. Did you? Finances are very important to me. I don't know about you, but FSR has the responsibility to manage our restaurant with other things, and their failure to do so has required us to hire an outside company at an added expense to us to do the job that we pay FSR to do. So I ask you, why are you, delegates, fighting so hard to retain a company that has not provided us the excellent service that we deserve? If the Board finds a company that can do a better job, I ask you now, what is the problem?
I'm Lori Hazelton. I was delegate for nine years, member of the Board of Directors for three years. I have plenty of history in this community. I've lived here for 15 years. I have the ultimate respect for every single one of these delegates here today, especially Cal Martin. You're doing a great job leading this Assembly. I have a message from Joe Firmino himself. He said, "This management company has always been fair and honest. What more do you want?" And I agree with Joe.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to make comment? Okay? If not, we'll actually need a motion if we're going to reopen debate among the delegates. Is there a motion? One more. Mr. Vols.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Mike Vols. I'm the other Mike Vols. And what I'd like to say, I think slow down is a good idea, but I think that we need a commitment from the three Board members who aren't here to also slow down. One of the RFPs or some of them said, "We need to put something in place by the 1st of January." Well, that's not slowing down. I think if everybody slowed down, we wouldn't have to have a recall if we wait until there's a new Board put in place in April, and then we can take it from there, and they can all make a good decision. Anyway, slow down's good, but it's got to come from both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Is there a motion to reopen debate among delegates? It is moved. Do we have a second? Jim has a second. First was by Marcia, second by Jim. And who would like to speak on our single microphone?
I keep hearing from everybody that you guys didn't know about things that were going on, and this is what I was talking about with transparency. We did not know that the Board was going forward with their looking. Yes, it's what they were, that's what their job is, to look for new businesses, to bring in new administration. That's all good, but we didn't know about it either. We found out at a meeting. Am I right? Okay. So we are like in the dark, like a lot of you guys were in the dark. When we found out, we asked them to slow down. At our first Board meeting that we had last month, we asked them to slow down. We made a motion. Please slow down. Let us do the process, or you guys should do the process. They did not do that. They went forward, and then in their agenda, they have, I believe it says, going to make an announcement. Well, everybody's assuming that they know what that announcement is. None of us know. We don't know. Maybe there's a few. Maybe, maybe Joe knows, maybe Bob knows. But I'm not asking them. I don't care. What we are talking about is just, it's not First Residential Services. It's just being transparent, do your due diligence, and slow the down. Okay? That's all. I hear all of you guys. And guess what? I have talked to my residents, and I'm getting a totally different story than what you guys are getting. Okay? Everybody has an opinion. Everybody tells the story different. Thank you.
This is it, folks. Jim Nichol. I have a question for Chris. I believe I was reading the CCRs or the bylaws that these folks that we want to recall can reapply again in April. Am I correct on that? Chris?
So you're asking if those three can reapply?
Reapply in April for the election.
Not if they already have a term that now if they are recalled, there's a potential that they can put their name on the ballot for the April election. That's a possibility.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to make just a quick statement. The three folks we're talking about all have financial backgrounds. They're very good for our community, and finance is what we need. I know finances very well. So I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. That's all I have. Thank you again for your attention.
Thank you. Mike Vols, District 22. I just have a couple of things to say. When I first became a delegate and wondered what we did besides throw four parties a year and write 12 newsletters, I didn't get much of a answer that we did much more. I think we were not taken seriously by the Board, so forth, and I am proud of our new leader, Cal, that he has got us in a position where we are trying to be somebody again. I guess that's the way to put it. Okay? So I'll end that there. I think that there is a time limit. Nothing ever gets done if you don't move forward. And taking back and taking your time, either get the facts or you don't. Either interview the people and go out and see them, you do all your due diligence, or you don't. So what's there to slow down about? I think they've been doing it for what?
August 27th.
August. End of August. So September, October, November. I think some...
Call for the vote.
What's that?
He's calling.
Okay. You can call for the vote, but I would like to say one other thing. The, we keep saying, "Nobody's notified of anything around here." What the heck we got our newspaper for? I mean, is anybody putting information in that? What about our magazine? The President, if we've got issues like this, should address it in our magazine we get once a month. In our newspaper, I believe, we get twice a month. So there is avenues of communication that should be used. And I would recommend when they have issues like this and they're thinking about doing serious things like changing the management company, it should get out to the people. It shouldn't be as confusing as this. But I am happy that we're going forward with the recall, whether I agree with it or not. Thank you.
Okay, Kate, and then Linda.
You're going to call for the vote or you're not?
I called for the vote.
Kate had priority. Kate has something to say, and then we'll listen to what Linda wants to say.
I just wanted to say that the decision to begin this recall process is not taken lightly. The, I agree with Janice that we, as delegates, were not aware that the Board had moved as far along the timeline to hire a new management company as they apparently had based on the town hall meeting. So then finding out that the Board has decided that by January 1st, 2026, we would have a new management company in place felt a bit rushed to the people that are supposed to be listening to the members of Sun Lakes. So, and in order, I heard everybody say that the recall is being rushed. The reason the recall is being rushed is because the Board did not respond to the delegates' request to slow the process. And without that response, the delegates were put in a place to move forward to stop or delay the decision
There's no delay.
...being made by the Board.
This vote will not delay what Board members will do. I need to be very fair with you. They're interviewing people online right now, ma'am. So you can recall all you want, but that recall's not going to happen till February?
Okay, so they're going to make the decision regardless of what anybody wants.
I can't speak on their behalf, but I'm saying that possibility is very real. That's why I said early on, concurrent campaigns at the same time don't make any sense. Why would we duplicate the cost? I would think that this committee would be better served working with the Board in its entirety than trying to work through the problem.
And that's the whole, that's the whole crux of it, working with the Board. The Board has not been willing to work with the Assembly.
I'm sitting right here, ma'am.
I know you are. Where is the rest of the Board?
They're in a meeting right now.
Okay. So I guess we know where their priorities are.
Well, again, I agree with what you just said. 100%, Kate. Okay? Well, you have to understand where I'm coming from. If this committee moves forward today, as I said early on in this meeting, I implore you to do so. It's your right as a citizen to do so, and as a district delegate, you should exercise your rights. But by doing so, it will have zero effect on the possible outcome. Think of that. We should put our energies towards working together. There's zero effect. The only effect, the only effect is $15,000. That's the only effect we can give a day.
I think I know what Linda's going to say, so I'm going to make a comment as a district from, district delegate, a district from 21. I want to bring back to focus that we are not voting on whether FSR will be replaced or won't be replaced. We are not voting on whether the management company has the right to replace the management company. That is certainly their right.
That is their decision. What we are voting on is whether certain board members should be recalled for not following a legitimate process. That's what we are voting on. That's it.
I would like to call for the vote.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
And I'll turn this over to Chris. He has to record this vote. And if he would, please read the motion in full before the vote is called. Here we go. So, the resolution, as was read by Cal at the beginning, District Assembly Resolution Number 2025-1. A resolution of the delegate assembly to call a membership meeting to remove individual board members. Whereas, the delegate assembly of Sun Lakes Country Club HOA is vested with the authority to oversee governance matters, including calling a special meeting of the members of the association. And whereas, the delegate assembly has reviewed the facts, evidence, and circumstances related to these concerns. And whereas, the assembly finds that the removal of the below-named board members is in the best interest of the organization and its members, now therefore be resolved. That the delegate assembly hereby votes to call a special meeting of the members of the association to vote on the removal, recall, of the board members named below. And those names are Gary Burkle, board member, former treasurer, Sandra Guttnick, secretary, and Mary Jo McElwain, board member. With that, I am going to go by district for the vote. So, with that, Barbara Elness, District 1, what is your vote?
So, it's a yes or no?
It's a yes or no. Yes to move... So, the resolution is to move forward with the recall election, recalling Gary Burkle, Sandra Guttnick, Mary Jo, or no against the resolution and not have a recall of those three board members.
You can also vote abstain.
And you can also abstain. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. District 2, there is no delegate for that. So, District 3, Mr. Nichol. District 4, there is no present, absent, and no backup. Okay. Number 5, David Miller or Mary Miller?
On vacation.
Absent. Okay. District 6, Jesso Campo.
Yes or no?
No.
No. Okay. Number 7, Gail Billick.
Yes.
Number 8, I don't believe we have the alternate here for District 8. No, so absent. District 9, Linda Vieira.
Abstain.
Abstain. District 10, Jean Dobson. District 11 has no representation. District 12, Ann Hofert.
No.
No. District 13, Janice Rice.
Yes.
Yes. District 14, Carly Beeks.
Yes.
District 15, B Mercado.
Abstain.
Abstain. District 16, Tammy Alexander.
No.
No. District 17, Linda Spalding.
Yes.
District 18, Michelle Walter.
Yes.
District 19, Marcia Midget.
Yes.
District 20, Kate Reed.
Yes.
District 21, Cal Martin.
Yes.
District 22, Mike Vols.
No.
No. District 23, Charlie London.
Yes.
So, we have a total 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 nays and 2 abstain. And we have 5 absents. You do have 50% of the quorum, and you do have a majority with a vote of aye.
Did the motion pass? Sorry, Cal. Yes.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to say that with this, the district delegate assembly will sponsor several informational meetings throughout the community at various times coming up in which residents can participate. We also would like a representative from the master board at each of those to present a counter view of what we're talking about doing. Those of you will notify you of those as soon as rooms can be scheduled, and that will take place at a future date. I'd like to thank everybody who came for keeping it civil. It's really great to be a part of the community, have this much interest in... Wait, delegates need to stay to initial the roster.
Initiate the roster, please.
Yeah. Meeting's over.